We have a request from the planning board for zoning changes. We have a request from Hemlock Ridge, change of manager. We have an update from Bill Reed from the Las Green Valley National Heritage Corridor. Then we have town administrator's update with several things listed under that. Then correspondence, old business, new business, citizens forum, then adjourn. Could we please stand and pledge the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I do that?
No, I did that. I'll get it. Do you have your?
I know. I know. I already lost yours.
Um.
Section, it's on the agenda.
Agenda.
Section 30A, section 21A.
Yeah.
Yeah, paragraph.
Which paragraph? What, I don't want to look at.
To review.
To conduct.
Strategy session.
Is that collective bargaining? Okay.
Well, it's actually, it's non-union personnel.
I know, but it's the same paragraph.
Yeah.
Okay. The reasons for convening executive session, MGL, chapter 30A, sections 18 to 25. Paragraph two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Okay, that was motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Craig, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, Stella. Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and we will reconvene in open session.
I believe that the cultural council had that meeting scheduled, so we'll just go.
I'll be mouth, everybody, please, because, okay, sorry, we're a little bit later than we expected. Okay, let's see, public, and we are, let the record show, Deborah, that we are being recorded by the Telegram and Gazette. Public service announcements, Craig?
No, me, I'm all set.
Priscilla?
No.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
Congratulations to the Patriots.
I knew Mary would say that.
Mike's dressed, I didn't dress that way, but it's a good time to be a fan of New England sports.
That's right. Okay, we do have one little note, and it says you will be happy to know that Sturbridge has been listed as one of the ten beautiful towns of Massachusetts by the Cultural Trip Travel Website. Congratulations to Sturbridge. Okay.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
I just want to say for the residents watching, if you go on to the website, we're one of two, I think, North Hampton was the other one, that aren't coastal communities. Like, the other ones that were chosen were, you know, the Cape and various parts, various, right, that all have the ocean, and we don't. And I thought that was particularly noteworthy, that we're still one of the most beautiful towns, not having, you know, not being a coastal town, so, very, very good.
Okay, we do now have a public hearing on the community development strategy. Do you just want to read this, Mary, please?
Town of Sturbridge Public Meeting Community Development Strategy. The town of Sturbridge will be holding a public meeting to discuss its fiscal year 2017 community development strategy. The discussion will be held on Monday, February 6, 2017, 6:35 PM during the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting at Veterans Memorial Hall, Town Hall, 308 Main Street. The strategy identifies the town's community development priorities and is used as a supportive document in seeking funds through the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development Block Grant Program. Any persons having questions or comments will have an opportunity to be heard. For more information, contact Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Deputy Director James Maisick at 413-781-6045. Persons who require special accommodations should contact the Board of Selectmen's Office, 508-347-2500.
Okay, Leon, would you like to explain, please? And then, Jim, could you come on down?
So tonight, you, we're having a public hearing led by our friend and colleague from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, is Maisick, who will talk to you folks and lead us through a discussion on the Sturbridge Community Development Strategy. In your agenda packages, Madam Chair, you will find a marked up version of the, of the community development strategy for the town of Sturbridge, as prepared by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission in cooperation with our friends in the planning department.
Okay, good evening, Jim. Would you please, for the record and the folks at home, introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, Jim Maisick, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Three out of five familiar faces. I don't think I've met Craig before, or Michael, but hello. So this is a public meeting, not hearing, hearing, there'll be a hearing in two weeks on the actual CDBG, CDF application that you'll be applying for, the region application. This here tonight is requirement as part of that process. We did this four years ago, five years ago, when we applied for monies for the mobile home park, for the wastewater treatment facility. It's still a requirement, at least this year, where a town must have a current and active, what they call is a community development strategy, which was submitted with the application for the funds to the Mass D H C D. This is a revision of what was submitted in 2013. I've had some edits, Jean has gone through and made some edits, Leon has also made some edits. All with this document is, it's a summary of all your planning documents and reports they have within, within the town. It talks about your future community development efforts. It also has, it also has to address, the Commonwealth of Mass has what they call ten Sustainable Development Principles, it's been around for like fifteen years, and how your, your plans and your various documents adhere to those principles, and then has, then you have to prioritize your projects. And what we've, we've done with towns in the past is kind of keep the, the goals and the efforts more general, and if there are some specific things, and those are added in, but so basically you're all encompassing. If you look at what you have before you, there's very few changes or basically updates what was submitted, again, back three or four years ago. On the very first page, simply just updating by the date right here in the very first paragraph, right below, it just says the strategy originated in 2006, it was in more than a couple of years ago, and revised again, and it mentions the year as though they were, was revised. On the second page, the very first paragraph right here, what was not included previously was your accessibility plan, which was done in 2008. That was on 14 minute, when we did it a few years ago, and that's going to be just, that plan was an assessment of all of your public buildings and how the complies with 521 CMR and the American with Disabilities Act. On page three, there were two other planning documents that were more recently, which were included to be addressed, your recreational trails master plan in 2012, and then your more recent commercial tourist district improvement plan in 2014. And again, just a summary, little paragraph to include this within this overall document. Under future community development efforts, starts at the bottom of page three and goes on to page four, about halfway down under housing goals, you'll see what was added is, and it's the one, two, three, fourth bullet, provide options for seniors to make home modification repairs, so they can continue to live safely in their homes. So, on the application side, in the previous meeting we had a number of weeks ago, we talked about the need that's been addressed through prior work with the town on community development, and one has been housing, but also is a special need for those, for seniors, and particularly safety repairs and, and, and other improvements, so the folks can still live in a house in a, in a safe environment. And we are looking at this in a couple of different communities, and calling it an aging in place program, which would be a grant to seniors to accomplish some of those things, a grant of up to $5,000. So, as a result of looking to apply for that for this year, this bullet was added in as a goal, so specific to address modifications and housing for seniors. On page five, under public service and facilities goals, simply the adding under the third bullet, including the removal of architectural barriers. So again, when you're looking at upgrading your facilities in town, and it isn't just general improvements, but also make sure that those facilities are handicapped accessible, are made handicapped accessible, by removing any barriers to, to access. On page six, the changes, under protect land and ecosystems, there is an addition here about the acquisition of the plenty of community forest, and just some verbiage on that. And then, further below, under number five, and these are the community development, these are the sustainable development principles, which, which needs to be addressed, of how your plans and goals address those Commonwealth objectives. Under use natural resources wily, wisely, it mentions the work that was done for the mobile home park, and upgrade the wastewater treatment facility, and that was basically a conservation effort. And then also, the, you have the current 604B project with EPA and DEP, and that's mentioned in there as well. And then finally, under number nine, which is promote clean energy, it mentions the solar, the construction of the solar arrays in town, and agreement that you've entered into with that project. And then finally, under prioritization of projects, there essentially were two additions, and again, one, under number one, under, it's actually one B, establish priorities for building and facility upgrades, and replacement, including removal of architectural barriers. And then, on number four, housing, it adds in the statement again about the addressing needs for senior residents in, in town. And so those are essentially the changes that were in the document that you had previously approved in, in prior years. And again, the intent is to have any discussion on that, any further modifications, and, and then, if, if there are some, those we made, if there are none, then ask you to endorse the document.
Okay, any comments, questions from the board? Craig?
When we, if I'm not mistaken, we discussed this a few weeks ago. Is that correct?
Yes.
And wasn't it, at that time, there was going to be two or three towns involved in this, maybe North Brookfield and somebody else?
Correct. That was, yes, that was the-
That's still on the plate?
That was the application, yes. The, we'll be discussing the application in two weeks, and the 21st is a public hearing scheduled. So this is a requirement separate from that, but it's part of that process. So in order to apply for that program with North Brookfield and Brookfield, we have to update this document and then submit that with the application. So it's part of the process.
I got you. But we will still be the key controlling entity-
Yes, yes.
-of this particular agreement.
Yes. And, and I do have, when this is discussed, I do, I do want to just talk briefly about the hearing, because a couple of pieces of information I want to share with you. So we'll leave it.
Right, because when you were at the last meeting, the last time, I asked you, what was our liability going to be, you remember that?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. We did meet.
Excuse me?
We did meet.
Okay, I know, I forgot. It was a long game last night, that's why.
Good one, love. Okay, anyone else on the board? Questions, comments? It is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience, Ms. Bubon, would you like to come down, please?
Just have a correction to my corrections. I just realized, I apologize for the error. On page six, under nine, promote clean energy, we've actually approved three solar arrays, and I incorrectly added two solar arrays.
Okay, and just for the record, that was Jean Bubon, our town planner. No, that's okay.
So is, is it my understanding that on the 21st, we're going to discuss specific, specific project proposals?
Yes. There, there would be two project proposals, primarily focusing on housing, housing rehab, and then the housing program for seniors, actually grant program for seniors.
Now, you said that you have people in the field that will be able to take care of the application intake process? So they'll be processing and seeing who's eligible, who is not, and whether those projects are actually going to happen?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a notebook about, yay thick, about 400 pages, which we have, and how's all the, the application process, and with the contracts and all of that. I have a person in the office, and that's what she, she solely does. She does all the intake and, and does the income qualification. I have another person, does all the processing of the contracts. I have a rehab specialist who does the inspections. And then, I've- And then I've got another person, historic, who does, because these are federal monies, you have to comply with historic rehab standards, and she reviews the specs and does that part of it. So everyone has a little bit of piece of it as a team, and then for the program.
So as being the key facility or the generator of this, for these three different towns, how will this town be responsible for? Are you going to be responsible for funding? You know, what is our responsibilities going to be in this particular operation?
Your responsibility, well...
Could anything come back and bite the town?
In my history, it has not. Of 30 years' history, it has not. Now, if there were a problem, technically, I'd have to take the heat because you would be, we're managing this grant for you, so I'm on the hot seat. And so in my experience of running these programs, and probably $150 million worth over 30 years, I've never had any problems. I shouldn't say that. I have had, I have had a couple of problem housing rehab projects, which have been, which have been all resolved. Some were a little more difficult than others, but we're working with D H C D, and it was, it was a long story, we could spend hours on, they were all resolved, and nothing ever came back to bite, quote unquote, bite the town.
And do you people pick the contractors that go in and do these modifications? Or does the homeowner?
No. What happens is, there's two separate programs, so both, so the housing rehab program, there'd be a solicitation for contractors. So it advertised, put on your website, would advertise in the Villager. We might put in the Gazette, I'm not sure, probably just, well, we might. And then basically, and then we have a lot of contractors already that are working in Ware and Hardwick and Warren and Spencer and Lester, because we're working out there as well. And we would ask them if they would want to also be on this bid list. And then, so then what happens is, there's a formal, you know, process qualified, they're on that bid list. So they have to be on that bid list in order to be able to participate in the program. So we kind of, we want to vet them in advance. If a homeowner has a particular contractor, as long as no conflict, it's not my son or my husband, you know, then they can have that contractor bid on the work, as long as they also fill out and complete an application form, and they get qualified before they actually can do the work. So what happens on that, what we do is, we have a list of 20 people. We ask the homeowner to pick three off that list. And then, because we want everyone to have an opportunity at some point to bid, then we kind of go systematically to pick two others. So it's five. So someone can't say, well, I've been on this list now, here it's a whole year, I've never been on a project. And we try to get, everyone gets a chance to bid on it. So that's what he said, homeowner, pick three, we're going to go just down, you know, and add two more and just go down like that. So, so yes, the homeowner gets to choose, but then who's bidding. Now, as far as the award, it's typically made to the low bidder. However, if for some reason the owner wants to go to a different contractor, they have the right to do that, but they're going to pay the difference in price. So I think, maybe out of 150 times, you might have maybe one occurrence where someone wants to do that.
So the money going to the contractor, or is it going to the homeowner?
It's going to the contractor.
Contractor. Because I'm just looking at it from the standpoint that, you know, we select the contractor on behalf of the homeowner. Either the contractor gets in there and gets a window casing out, and here comes the termites, and, you know, we've got some structural damage. Instead of a $5,000 repair, it's going to be a $25,000 repair. And where do we go from there? Somebody's got to be in the soup somewhere.
Yep. So under the rehab program, which is, that would be the one, with the housing, with the program for the elderly, for the seniors, we wouldn't get into that kind of structural type work, it's more just safety type improvements, and cleanings, like furnace chimney, maybe do some grab bars, that kind of stuff.
But I'm talking about like putting in, you know, storm windows that haven't been there since the house was built in 18 hours.
So, all right, so a couple of things. Let me go back first on the flow, because there's a lot of sign offs on the payments, and on the payments, it's actually a two-party check between the owner and the contractor. So it's not like the owner just goes the owner, then the owner doesn't want to pay the contractor, no, it's got to be. Now also, rehab, my rehab specialist goes and does inspections at time of pay request to make sure the work's been done. And if there's an issue, and it requires, you know, a change or unforeseen conditions, there is typically enough room, wiggle room, to address those. And if not, we've had this in some case before, if it exceeds the limit, which the state's increased it now to, well, $35,040, $40,000 involves lead, $35,000 not. You can go into the state for a single case waiver. State's got to approve it. You have to justify it in respects, and we had had that on occasion, unforeseen, we don't know, and all of a sudden, we ran into that. An extra $5,000, we're already at the limit. Well, we have to go and get approval. And the state said, fine, you got enough money, fine. Projects range, I mean, right now, they're averaging about 26.5, but some projects could be $8,000, some could be $35,000, but then average about 26.5 for a full. And that's talking older home, you know, it's probably historic, maybe involves some lead, windows, insulation.
And they certainly follow the rules and regulations and inspections by our local building inspector?
Yes, Nelson.
Local law.
Yes, yep.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, actually, we're doing stuff in Wales, Holland, Brimfield, and the program, so yeah. Everything's got to be pulled a permit. We need the permit copy with the first payment request. We need a sign offs at the, to release retainage. The only time that's been an exception to that, we have a couple of towns where the billing inspector is very, very part-time, and we've had, I have contractors literally for six months try to get a sign off, and I don't want to hold that payment up. So I said, give me in writing, and all the attempts you've made, and now I'll release your retainage, because I, you know, I just can't, I don't, not right to hold up this payment, because you're not going to get a sign off.
Now, do we have to have a town, a town employee to monitor this thing, or is this something the state does? So we're just kind of like the front person on the contract?
Correct. Basically, they should take zero, zero amount of your staff time. We would submit reports to you, I would, whoever I have running, you know, the contact person would be, update probably, you know, maybe once a quarter or so to you, or if you wanted them. So there'd be virtually very little. We might come in here, maybe use the town office for some of the startup stuff to get things going. A lot of it is pretty much is done by phone or email, and, but then the actual physical inspections are done with, my rehab specialist comes out and does the physical work. Thank you very much.
Hey, anything else from the board?
I just have a quick question. You know, on the prioritization of projects, infrastructure, recreation, economic and housing? That's a list, is that simply a list, or is that in order of priority? In other words, one is more of a priority than two?
It's just a list. It's just a list. Nope. No, there's no, no, it's not, no, it's just a list.
Okay. I wonder if maybe we, if we alphabetized it, maybe, so that, I don't know, because when I first looked, it made me think infrastructure was number one and housing's number four.
So you're saying maybe go A, B, C, D, and then go, the sub ones would be 1, 2, 1, 2, 1, 2, or maybe I?
No, I'm just saying...
Change the order to make them alphabetized.
Change the order to just alphabetize it, so it's not deceiving. Well, so E, number three would be number one. It's just a suggestion, because right now, it's just kind of...
Well, if you took it that way, other people could too.
Yeah, it creates the question.
So what we could do is just, you know, change that to A, B, C, D, and then the, rather than sub A's and sub B's, just be bullets.
Yeah, or, or just make economic development number one, infrastructure number two, I'm sorry, housing number two, infrastructure, and then recreation.
He's just talking about alphabetizing according to the...
Alphabet, I'm thinking alphabet...
No, I'm just saying, so that it, there's a reason that one is number one.
Okay.
That way, you'll be still consistent with the one.
I would even just, I can even just eliminate the numbers, too. And maybe just put a bullet there.
Or send it to a sentence, and it says, these are not any prioritizers.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
Anything else from the board? Anything from the public? No? Motion and closed public hearing? So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now, we do need to take a vote to...
Accept the changes.
Accept the changes in the community development strategy.
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'll make those changes, going to back to Leon.
Same.
I'll have them for your signatures at the next time you come in for the...
Nelson, can you have the check here?
Hold your breath.
Change, change, too.
Yeah, all changes, yeah.
Can I just have another, maybe 30 seconds?
Sure.
So again, I've got another public hearing on the 21st, actually in Agawam, so I'm having another staff person attend this one. The only, the only thing just which would be a slight different from when we did this past, when this was done a few years ago, when we worked, we had, there was, I mentioned before, target area is required because of your population size. So anything over town of a 5,000 population, and I think Mike used to work in Ware, I understand, is that correct?
I work in Ware now.
You work in Ware now? Okay.
He used to work in Agawam.
Okay, oh. So where's, where's over 5,000, we have a target area in Ware, and we have a target, we had a target area in Agawam. But now the rules changed that there's no target areas required for this program. So we did this program a few years back with the wastewater treatment facility, we're also looking at doing housing. The target area was limited just to the mobile home park. So we have a waitlist on housing. We have about 20 people. Seventeen of those 20, seventeen of those 20, this is just for Sturbridge, are in the mobile home park. Now it's all townwide. So to me, and I've got the same situation in Agawam, it's a fairness issue because, or unfairness issue, because it's open townwide now, so everyone should have the same chance to be able to participate in the program. So what I'm, what I'm going to suggest on this program design, which I've done the same in Agawam, is that we, if it gets funded, we open up the period for people to get their pre-applications in, their letter of interest or whatever, and after that time and date is done, we do a lottery. And then that lottery will establish the new waitlist. Because again, before, no one outside the mobile home park could apply for this program. And then anyone who submits after that deadline of lottery will then be added sequentially to the list. So that I'll have mentioned again at the hearing, but that's what I propose, and I think it's fair.
That's about the fairest way you can do it at this point.
Will you have some propaganda or paperwork or anything like that?
Yes, you will.
That we can disseminate to our town residents, or put it on our website or something like that?
You will have, yep, you'll have a summary, you'll have some descriptions. Yes, you will.
Outstanding.
It'll probably be getting it out to you the end of next week.
Mr. Mazick? Do you know which of your staff members are coming next?
Erica Johnson.
Erica Johnson?
She's been with me for six, seven years, so she's done a number of programs, mostly in the Hill towns, but she actually, she's been working in Charlton and in Lester.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, take care.
A good night, safe travels. Okay, let me just get this down. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request from the planning board for zoning changes. Jean, could you come down? Rush, you want to come down too with her?
She's at home.
He got roped in. Hi, good evening. So the planning board has been working on several zoning changes this past year, and they related to the multiple dwelling project bylaw and the open space residential development bylaw. And after a lot of study by both myself and Jane Armington from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, we've recommended that the multiple dwelling bylaw be deleted, as no one's really used that bylaw, and that we add a variety of housing types to the open space residential development bylaw. So this request is merely that the planning board voted to be the petitioner at its last meeting, and this vote will just allow them to start the public hearing process, as outlined in Mass General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Okay, questions from the board?
Just to, I'm sorry, just to reiterate what the planning director is saying, they need a referral from the board of selectmen to start the review process for the planning board. And that starts, according to Mass General Law, with the board of selectmen.
Right. They will proceed, and then public hearings?
Public hearings before town meeting.
That's correct.
The multiple dwelling bylaw that you said isn't being utilized, when did we adopt that?
I couldn't tell you offhand. I think, I want to say 1998, but I could be off on the date, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring the original date with me.
And have years gone by where it's not used?
Yeah, it really has. It's, you know, it's on parcels, 15 acres or more, and it's, its idea was to encourage a variety of housing types. However, in 2006 or '07, we adopted the open space residential design bylaw, development bylaw, and it really has a better set of standards, and kind of standards that communities are trying to encourage developers to use. It leaves it more open space, there's less infrastructure needed, and you can still, the way that we've drafted the bylaw changes, we can still allow a variety of housing types. And we didn't increase the density, so we based it off the density that's currently allowed in the bylaw, and that would have been allowed in the multiple dwelling bylaw. So it's almost quite redundant the way we have it, so we'll just simplify the bylaw. We've really been working to try to clean up, and eventually, we need to reorganize everything because we've had a lot of amendments as we've gone through.
Okay, Priscilla? Oh, I thought you were raising your hand. Opening your bottle.
Got it.
Okay, no other questions?
In this particular scenario here, we have like in the dwelling end of it, is that, I don't see anything in there that would, you know, allow what's there to stay, like a grandfather clause or something like that?
Well, if there were anything that were permitted under that bylaw, under the Mass General Laws, they would be afforded that so-called grandfather protection anyway, as lawfully non-conforming.
Right. I'm just thinking, you know, if you get into like down on Cedar Lake where the trailer park is and stuff like that, you know, people that have had trailers for years?
Right, that doesn't impact this at all.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then, does somebody want to make a motion to refer the proposed zoning amendment regarding open space residential design to the planning board for a hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, is there a motion then to refer the proposed zoning amendment regarding multiple dwelling projects to the planning board for a hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request for change of manager at Hemlock Ridge. Okay, could you please introduce yourself for the record, please?
Lee Palmer.
Okay, and are you, you're the licensed person of the Hemlock, right?
Well, my father's the licensed person, and I'm trying to get switched over to it.
Right, so the change...
It's change of manager.
Yeah, because it's a change of manager.
Change of manager. Okay, to Lee.
So the name of licensee on the Form 43, Madam Chair?
Will.
Is going to refer to Mark.
Yep.
The person, contact person, if you folks had any question, was in the two-thirds way down the page, you see that it was Lee Palmer?
Palmer, right. Yep. No, and the query requests form is signed and everything. Does the board have any questions, comments?
Yes, do we have, do we have anything from our chief of police stating his position on this particular license change?
We don't usually.
I know, I don't, we've got some paperwork here that's kind of troubling.
Yeah, it's 10 years old, though.
I'm talking to the other selectman.
Yeah, no, I saw that too, and I looked at the dates and everything, and I attributed that to youth. And, you know, we haven't had any complaints and stuff, but we don't usually get input from the chief.
Okay. In this particular case, do you think it would be wise to get input from the chief before we take a vote?
Anyone can ask for anything. Do you want to make a motion?
I don't, no, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, you know, I looked through this, and I, it, you know, it's all very, very old, and...
this and I, it, you know, it's all very, very old, and, you know, I'll, I don't need a recommendation from the police chief. I've, I've known Lee and his family for many years, and I'd make a motion that we approve Lee Palmer as the manager of the Hemlock Ridge Golf Course.
Okay, I'll make a second to that, also the comment that, you know, if there is ever any problem or anything, we can always withdraw approvals. Okay, any other comments? Mary?
I just wanted to know, do you, because I know you were unintentionally, I think, cut off because Craig made a question here, so do you want to speak to any of this?
No, I, no, I just, it was ten years old, and when I looked it up, I wouldn't even applied if I, you know, didn't look it up and saw that anything over ten years shouldn't matter. That was the only thing I had to say.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second for a change of manager from Palmer to Lee Palmer. All those in favor? Four. All those opposed? Four to one. Okay, we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have an update from Bill Reed, the Lash Green Valley National Heritage Corridor. Bill?
Good news, been a while. Been a long while. Thank you for allowing me to come before you this evening. What I'd like to do is to first congratulate you on being named one of the ten beautiful towns in Massachusetts. I didn't need anybody to tell me that. And I also want to give you a brief update on the activities of the Lash Green Valley National Heritage Corridor over the last year, and then present you with a new plaque, because by an act of Congress this past year, the National Heritage Corridor was officially changed its name from the Quinnebog and Shetucket Rivers Valley National Heritage Corridor to the Lash Green Valley. Somewhere in this town, there's a plaque that was given to you probably twenty years ago, and so we're pleased to hand you a new one to hang where you would like to. But just to remind you that Sturbridge is one of thirty-five towns that make up the Lash Green Valley National Heritage Corridor. You're one of the nine Massachusetts towns, and there are twenty-six Connecticut towns within the corridor. These thirty-five towns encompass a thousand square miles, seven hundred thousand acres, and remain to this day seventy-seven percent undeveloped land, mostly forested land. Importantly, this region is really the last stretch of predominantly undeveloped land along the coastal I-95 corridor between Boston and Washington, D.C. And this is why the National Heritage Corridor was designated by the Department of Interior by an act of Congress in nineteen ninety-four, the fourth one so designated. Now, there are, I think, forty-eight or forty-nine throughout the country. A brief update of some of the things we've been doing, our most popular and familiar program is Walktober. Last year, two thousand sixteen Walktober, twenty-six years of doing this program. Sturbridge has always been well represented in this program during the entire month of October. This past year, we had two hundred and seventy free guided volunteer-led walks and experiences throughout the region. We also use this opportunity to promote a lot of events, including the events that are obviously critical to the economic development here in Sturbridge, like your Harvest Festival and events going out Old Sturbridge Village during the month of October. Total attendance gathered at all of these events and the walks were over sixty thousand people last year, which really represents a significant number of dollars coming into the region. Walktober is in planning for two thousand seventeen. We hope to see participation from folks in Sturbridge for that. There's always been good participation, especially with your Trails Committee in the last, the last several years and your Historical Society. This past year, we developed the spring version of Walktober called Spring Outdoors, focusing initially on land trusts throughout the area. Your Opacum Land Trust participated in that. This year, we're expanding it out to include a lot of different groups, an opportunity to, during the spring, get people out and enjoying the beautiful opportunities that we have to explore the outdoors. This year, we're expanding the bounds of that program. We're going from the vernal equinox to the summer solstice, so you've got three months of the true days of spring to participate in Spring Outdoors. That program will not have this large brochure like this. This has cost a lot of money, and this program's been going on for twenty-something years, a lot of sponsors. So, as we build Spring Outdoors, we're still going to be primarily online, accessing information off our Facebook page, off the, off our website, as well as the websites of the individuals and the organizations that are developing those. That program is just in development now, so if you know of a group in Sturbridge that want to take advantage of that, have them take a look at our website or give us a call. We've also been doing an explorer guide. Every year, we update the explorer guide. This one's kind of, kind of ratty because we ran out of them. We put twenty-five thousand of these things, and they're very popular. Sturbridge is well represented in here with your tourism-related organizations represented in here. But all the state parks are in here, hiking trails, land trust locations, farms that are open to public, great opportunities to explore things in the out-of-doors. The two seventeen version is in process right now. I also want to remind the town that the Lash Green Valley will provide support letters for municipal projects that advance our management plan. Examples might include brownfields redevelopment projects, open space acquisition, trails work, streetscape improvements, land use planning, and historic preservation projects. So, if you're looking for letters of support through the offices of the Lash Green Valley for those types of projects, please don't hesitate to get in touch with us. If you're looking for funding from other groups that needs support, letters of approval, then feel free to look to us for that. Give us a couple of days' advance notice, however. Sometimes these things do come in awful quickly. One of the programs that we've continued to do for the last several years has been cleanups. We fund cleanups, and if there's a scout group or a municipal group or a nonprofit or school within your town that would like to develop a cleanup of some kind, maybe there's a riverbank along the Quinnebog that could use some, some help, maybe there's a roadside, maybe it's something around Earth Day, we will provide grants up to five hundred dollars to help pay for that. It can help to pay for bags and rakes and, you know, pizza and soda afterwards for all the volunteers, promotion of it. All we ask them to do is to give us an accurate tracking of all the trash. And we have a little trash tracker form, and you'd be surprised what we have pulled out of rivers and what we have found along the sides of the roads as we help fund community groups to keep our region beautiful. Some of the other things that will be coming up shortly, we also provide historic preservation grants. It's not a lot of money. Every year, it averages about ten thousand dollars on our budget that we're able to send to different groups for doing that. The cap is twenty-five hundred dollars, but you'd be surprised for a small organization like a local historical society, looking for some help with maybe a research project or documentation project, how far that money can go. So, look to that information. That will be coming available out, and we do press releases on a regular basis, so look to the local paper for that. Some of the programs that we're known for are water quality monitoring. We've been doing this for ten years with about seventy volunteers assisting to conduct water quality monitoring in the region for a variety of parameters like bacteria counts and temperature and oxygen levels. This is what's under the rubric of citizen science. We provide data that the scientists, whether it's the environmental folks in Massachusetts or Connecticut, just can't get out and do as much as they would like to.
We've, we've got a job for you.
Okay, good. Well, so, anyway, I'll put you in touch with our water quality monitoring coordinator.
We've got a job for you.
And so, and so, we do go out and do that. We've worked with the Webster Lake Association for several years. In the past, some folks on our groups have been doing testing on the Quinnebog River. We've been testing in particular water on all the boat, a lot of the boat launch locations. So, it's an area that we continue to do and look to that. Paddling is something that we love, you know? There's a lot of trails organizations, as you well know, but when it came to water, the Lash Green Valley felt, you know, we're going to plant our flag in water. So, we do water quality monitoring, and we also promote paddle recreation. This is our new paddle guide. This is a paddle guide to the Quinnebog, the Willimantic, and the Shetucket Rivers, the three major rivers that have usually good accessible paddling all throughout the year, except for a dry year like last year. Now, your very own Tom Chamberlain, who's well-known to us and sure well-known to you, was the first person to get the Quinnebog, first section of the Quinnebog River designated as a national canoe trail, national recreational trail. Well, on our behalf, we then had the entire Quinnebog designated, as well as the Willimantic, as well as the Shetucket last year. So, that's a really nice designation. That's what this little national recreational trail emblem means. Now, we had a Quinnebog guide, we had a Willimantic guide, but when we get the Shetucket done, we want to put one together for all three of them, and you can access that off our web page. We do charge a few bucks for that. What we've done is we've put up an information kiosk on every public boat launch on the Quinnebog, Shetucket, and the Willimantic. We pay for that through a, through a grant and through help from other organizations. And so, when you go out to the Quinnebog River to a public spot, you're going to find an information kiosk there to help you understand what you're going to encounter as you paddle downstream. Paddle recreation is fantastic. These are amazing, clean, beautiful rivers. You don't have to go to Maine to paddle a beautiful river, and we're trying to promote people to realize you can do that right here. Now, my title is as the Chief Ranger of the Lash Green Valley National Heritage Corridor, and as such, I have several volunteer rangers that work with me to get out into the communities to share information about all the things that you can do in this region. We really are the cheerleaders, trying to get people to understand there's a lot that you can do to experience this beautiful place we call the Lash Green Valley. And we go to events throughout the thirty-five towns, small events and big events. Last year, we attended seventy different events. We've been to the Big Mo in the past, you know what the Big Mo is, right up at the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club? It is a huge mass outdoor expo. We've gone to that. We've been at your Harvest Fest, Heritage Festival here in October in the past also. So, the rangers go out and do talks throughout the region. I've given up to twenty or thirty talks in the, in the past. I've spoken to your senior center, I've spoken at the library, and I've spoken in the Historical Society, and really look to people in town that are interested in having one of the rangers come and talk about the history of this region, the natural and cultural resources that we have, to help celebrate and help educate all the great things that we have in this region, so hope you take advantage of that. Lastly, what I'd like to do is just show you a couple of other things. I'm going to leave with your town manager. Our two most recent member magazines, but in particular, the first one has our Anna Report from last year. You've probably got one in the mail, but I'm going to make sure you have one also. And lastly, present to you this new plaque. It's pretty sturdy, and all the towns have the same one. Welcome to Sturbridge, Lash Green Valley National Heritage Corridor, and there's two holes to mount it. You can mount it on a piece of wood, put it downstairs, put it on a building or wherever you want to put it. You might find the old one somewhere and maybe just replace it, but-
Probably got mislaid when we renovated.
Right, it might have, it might have, but glad to provide you with this, and if there are any questions at all, I'd be happy to entertain them at this time.
Any questions from the board?
I do. I do. Are you familiar with the Massachusetts Wildlife and, you know, land management getting into something about shutting down some of the pieces of trails that run across state land?
Mm-hmm.
And that, you know, some of the trails that we have put in may actually have to be abandoned and let grown back to their original state?
Right. I read the column and, in the Telegram and Gazette, and that was the first I heard about it, was reading, was reading the column. And I thought the column was read, well-written, and I certainly understand a lot of the issues presented by the people in this town that enjoy their trails, and I also understand the issues from the job and the mandate that the people responsible for that land have. You know, it's, it's, it's an interesting situation that I did not realize was occurring.
It's, it's an interesting situation, but a lot of what you're trying to do and promote is going to get shut down. I mean, we've got one small area in town here now that the state has come in and put the padlocks on it. And it's, it's not a trail per se, it's a roadway, it's like a, an emergency exit to get out of an area where there's only one way in in our town. But, I mean, I can see this thing coming along to the point that it's going to, you know, it's going to cause problems with this whole trail infrastructure.
Right.
And, I mean, on the weekends, you know, you can go down by Sturbridge Village there, and, I mean, there's, there's a ton of cars down there.
Oh, I'm very familiar with that, that tract of land.
They love them.
Yeah. Well, I think that it just goes to show that effective communication goes a long way to make sure that people understand what are the mandates and how do they work together to try to solve what everybody's trying to do on the land. And that, that's what, it seemed to me, that's what I read, was the need for effective communication. We love what you're doing with trails. I worked in this community for almost thirty years as an employer in Sturbridge Village. I knew that tract of land when we called it the Morgan Tract, and I was part of the team that helped to turn that tract of land over several years ago. And I've been very heartened to see what's going on out there, because I knew that area very well. And this town has really taken the lead, I think, in many of the Lash Green Valley communities with promoting trail work. It's exceptional what you guys have done. And we participated up here also. We've done programs up here, we've done member programs and hikes, full moon hikes and first day hikes and all those great things that you do. So, we certainly want to support what you're doing, we want to be a part of it, we want to share that good work with all the people that live in the region, as well as visitors.
What article are you referring to? What paper was it in? I mean, what day was it in?
It was about a month or so ago. It came out, it was passed forward to me. I can't read all the newspapers in the region, but I, but that was one-
The piece of land that I was referring to is the Gladding Lane. We have a section down there where, you know, it goes between somebody's house and another piece of road that goes out on the other end into Holland, but there's this one section where you go across a small piece of state forest property. It's, it's a road, and they put a bar right across it and put the rocks up, and nobody's going there. So, it seems like they're shutting down everything of state properties, and I don't really know why. I don't know whether it's because of liability reasons.
I think, I think, I think the reason is that their actual mandate, those are wildlife preserve areas that they've done that to. And so, to be a wildlife preserve, there's a lot of things that they want to do to promote the life and the habitat for the, for, for those wildlife. That's where they're set up. And while there's public access to them, they need to be very careful in communicating with trails groups where trails are allowed and where they're not. And I think that was, that was what I was seeing as, as the issue. And so, when they realized what was going on, they said, we've got to shut this down. And that's, and that's how it, that's how it came about.
Right, but, you know, we spend a lot of money on trails, and a lot of people have put in a lot of blood, sweat, and tears on those trails in their own accord.
I understand. I've done trail work myself.
And to have them just come up with this ruling now that we've got to take out a piece of trail, I mean, they were trying to get the grand trunk back together.
Right.
And it doesn't look like that's going to happen, because this thing is going to be broken up into a million pieces.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, I don't want to see your, your trail work go all to heck because of the, you know, the state's mandates coming out.
Right. Well, I appreciate that.
Okay, Bill would like a picture with you and the plaque.
Yes, we've got to have a picture. Go right out there, and I will take your picture. Why don't you all stand? Yeah, you can go right behind, and then I'll, I'll take a nice picture.
Let's put him in the middle. Put him on the spot.
Yeah.
Sign.
Well, that's perfect. One, two, three, trails. Perfect, thank you very much.
Now you're going to concede you, Bill. I know. Take care.
Yep, I will take it.
Take care, and thank you for coming in.
Oh, that's heavy. Yeah.
Let me give you these two, just so you have them on file. Have a nice day, everybody. Thank you very much.
Great, nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Excuse me.
Quite all right, we have the Town Administrator's Update.
Madam Chair, under the, the first item on the Town Administrator's Update is the recommendation for the new Fire Chief for the town of Sturbridge. I want to give you a little bit of the history as to how we started and where we came from, and where we ended up with with the result of the Fire Chief Search Committee. As you know, Madam Chair, the process governing the search for a new Fire Chief is found within the Town Charter in Section six point five. Upon the resignation of former Chief David Zinter, I was charged with forming a five-member search committee to review the position and to establish a search process. In August of two thousand sixteen, I presented my committee, which was approved unanimously by the Board of Selectmen. The members of the committee are present here today, and I'm going to take a moment to introduce them all to you. First was Patricia Mantia. Dr. Mantia is a Sturbridge resident and a college professor who has served on and chaired a number of executive search committees in the past. In addition, she's served as a trainer and a consultant to the Mass Firefighting Academy for more than two decades. Frank McNeil is a recent Sturbridge resident who has many years of ambulance experience managing a service in the private sector. He is also a member of the Town's Personnel Committee, charged with overseeing the wage Committee, charged with overseeing the wage and classification process here in Sturbridge. Russell Chamberlain is a lifelong resident of Sturbridge with over 35 years of service to the Sturbridge Fire Department. He's now retired, and he has recruitment and onboarding experience with Mass DOT. Chief Stephen Coleman is the chief of the Auburn Fire Department, where he leads a combination department of 30 full-time and 12 call members. Chief Coleman served on the previous Fire Chief Search Committee and provided a seasoned perspective and guidance to the committee during this process. The last member of the committee is the Town Administrator, which I serve as the chair of the search committee. Among the first steps the search committee did was to solicit comment from the Selectmen, general public, and members of the Fire Department as to the qualities and qualifications that we were looking for in a new chief. The latter exercise also resulted in a meeting with the members of the search committee and members of the department to talk about this subject in greater detail. Search Committee authorized an advertisement for the vacancy and solicited through the MMA Telegram, the Fire Chiefs Association internally, as well as postings on the Town's website and the Town Clerk's Office. The search committee established criteria for evaluating candidates. We received 35 respondents from around the region, around the state, and indeed around the world. After deliberation, the search committee narrowed the pool of candidates down to nine, which were granted a preliminary interview. After that first interview was completed, the committee decided on a group of three, which were deemed to be finalists for the position. These finalists were announced to the Selectmen, as well as to the community at large. From there, there was an assessment center conducted by the search committee. It was a two-day exercise, which consisted of a second interview, a writing exercise in which candidates answered a series of written questions, a writing exercise in which the candidates prepared memos and letters to examine writing styles, a presentation on a topic of general knowledge within the fire community, a tour of the public safety complex with a meeting with interim chief and other members of our Fire Department, and a leaderless exercise, which evaluated their ability to work together on a specific problem, and it concluded in this room with a final public interview, which was broadcast to the local, broadcast to the community through our local cable channel. Finally, a comprehensive background investigation was conducted on all the three finalists for the position by the Police Department. All in all, the process took about six months and involved countless hours of work by the members of the search committee and the candidates, and I'm proud to have worked with all of them on this process. So thank you very much, all of you. At the last meeting of the Fire Chief Search Committee, the committee voted unanimously to recommend John Grasso as our next Sturbridge Fire Chief. I wish to make it clear that the recommendation being made is no way a criticism of the other two finalists. I want to commend Lieutenant Cantera and Chief Goodell for their involvement in this process. I was pleased to meet and get to know both of them through this process, and I wish them much success in the years ahead. To say that John Grasso was impressive in the interview process would be an understatement. His credentials are also equally impressive. He has over 30 years of firefighting experience across the border in his home state of Connecticut. He has worked in the current town of Hampden, Connecticut since 1998, and currently holds the rank of captain and serves as the Director of Training and EMS for the community. In this position, he directs the firefighting and EMS training, serves as the Department's Safety Officer, oversees all aspects of the department's EMS equipments and supplies. As a captain, he commands a fire station, oversees the maintenance and cleaning of the apparatus, and supervises three lieutenants. In addition, he has experience overseeing ground operations for major events within his community. His educational background is exemplary. He possesses a Bachelor of Fire Science and Fire Administration from Empire State College, a Bachelor's in Science and Accounting from Providence College, a Master's in Business Administration from Quinnipiac University, a Master's of Science in Organizational Leadership from Quinnipiac, and he's also taken classes in law school at Quinnipiac. With regards to, bless you.
Thank you.
With regards to fire certifications, he possesses many highly qualified certifications, including Fire Officer 1 and 2, Fire Service Instructors, EMS Instructor, Health and Safety Officer Certification, Fire Marshal, and Emergency Medical Dispatch, just to name a few. Furthermore, he is a licensed and practicing paramedic for 21 years and has been educating and training of fire service and EMS for over 25 years. This is an asset that our department will greatly benefit from and was one of the items that we discovered was needed as we went through our process to determine what qualifications we felt would be necessary for our new chief. In his first interview, he impressed me with his knowledge of the community, his formal education and credentials for the Fire Chief's position, his strong budgeting background, but most importantly was his knowledge and understandings of the operation of an EMS service. However, he really distinguished himself in the assessment center. In the assessment center, he excelled in nearly all aspects of the process. His second interview was highlighted by his vision of the Sturbridge Fire Department, and I presented to you a document that was presented to us by Mr. Grasso entitled "Sturbridge Fire Department: Today, Tomorrow, and Beyond," which he prepared detailing his recommendations moving forward for the department, his strategic priorities, including organizational strength, community interaction, fiscal operations, and enhancing our administrative support systems, and his strategic goals as the next chief, including leadership, succession planning, health and safety, and diversity. And I've given you all a copy of his report to the board. In his written exercises, he exceeded in ways other candidates may not have. His responses to the questions were well-thought-out and well-presented. His draft correspondence was clear and appropriate. In his presentation, he developed an appropriate PowerPoint presentation on fire alarms and carbon monoxide detectors in single-family homes. Not only did I learn something through this exercise, what impressed me most was that he used his knowledge of the subject by showing a smoke detector as an example. He did not have knowledge that this subject was going to be discussed in advance, and he does not travel with smoke detectors in his car, to the best of my knowledge. But he did know that hotels would have spares at the front desk, and he borrowed one for his presentation. As one reviewer, I was quite impressed with his quick thinking. In the leaderless exercise, I found him to be most impressive. He took control of the situation, was a good facilitator during the exercise. He provided thoughtful input, kept the team on track. Throughout the process, his strong leadership skills were evidenced to me with his words during the exercise, and I got to see it firsthand. In his final interview, he highlighted the qualities which would make him a good chief. He stressed his interpersonal and listening skills, empathy, and compassion. He also stressed his fiscal management and fire service and EMS background. He has many of the attributes that I find to be important in the position, including civic engagement, public service, and a passion for the profession. He is up to date on many of the innovations within the fire and EMS service, and I have the confidence in his experience to succeed in the profession and the position of Fire Chief. Finally, Captain Grasso demonstrated to me time and time again that he truly wanted the position of Fire Chief in Sturbridge. About the Town of Sturbridge and the members of the search committee, he certainly did his homework. After interviews, he promptly responded with an appreciation of the time that the search committee spent with him. He was clearly prepared for his interviews and the assessment center, and this was most demonstrated by the booklet he prepared about the vision for the department. Most impressively, he followed up on one of the interview questions concerning quality control with a customer service questionnaire, which he developed as an example of how he might judge the service being provided by his personnel. These were clear indications to me that he wants the position here in Sturbridge. I want to reiterate that through a thorough background investigation had been conducted into John Grasso. The background investigation was conducted by Lieutenant Desert. The thing that I was left with was that Captain Grasso was a man of integrity and honor who gave thoughtful and truthful answers throughout the process. In conclusion, the recommendation comes after a process that was consistent with the goals set forth in our Town Charter. Captain Grasso had demonstrated his fitness for the position through his merit, as evidenced by his professional background, his educational background, his credentialing background, his leadership and budgetary skills, and his professionalism throughout his career. On behalf of the members of the Fire Chief Search Committee, who had authored a memo of recommendation to the Town Administrator, signed by all members, I am happy to present the name of John Grasso to serve as the next Fire Chief for the Town of Sturbridge. Unfortunately, Fire Chief candidate Grasso was unable to be here today. Unlike me, he's in a worse health condition than I am.
He would have fit at home here.
Excuse me.
Quite all right.
And, but he did give his regrets, and I hope to have him before the Board of Selectmen for your next meeting. Madam Chair, the business that comes before you tonight is not an appointment of John Grasso as our next Fire Chief, but I am asking as behalf of the Town Administrator to enter into, to authorize me to enter into negotiations with John Grasso to serve as our next Fire Chief.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Okay.
Thank you, members of the Board of Selectmen, and once again, thank you to all the members of the committee. Your service has been very valuable to the town, and I will thank you.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate the time and effort, and it did take time.
And a lot of effort.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Especially Chief Coleman. Twice as the char.
Twice as the char.
Thank you very much.
May I?
As long as the Chair recognizes you.
Yes, please. Have a seat.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I just wanted to say...
Okay, excuse me. Could you just introduce yourself for the record?
Absolutely. Stephen Coleman. I'm the Fire Chief for the Town of Auburn, a member of the Fire Chief Search Committee here in Sturbridge. I just wanted to take an opportunity, I hope they didn't leave, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the Town of Sturbridge, thank the committee. As the only member of the committee that is either not a town employee or a resident, I was shown a tremendous amount of hospitality and courtesy throughout this process. You know, here serving as your technical advisor, it was a privilege to do so. I work, I have the opportunity as the Chairman of the Fire District to work with a lot of committees. I'm asked to do a lot of things. This was one of the best committees that I had an opportunity to work with. Highly professional, at the end of the day, just good people. So I want to thank the committee. I also want to thank the Town Administration, especially Mr. Gorman, again, with the hospitality that he showed me throughout this process, and the professionalism that the Board of Selectmen demonstrated over the last six months with this process as well. You should feel comfortable that it was a very well-thought-out, thorough, professional process. I was happy to be a part of it. And again, I just want to thank the Town of Sturbridge for allowing me to be a part of it, and again, for your hospitality. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your kind words.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Have a good evening.
Yes, you too.
You don't have to leave. You can always stay for the remainder of it.
I've got another one next week.
I didn't want you to think that we were kicking you out. Madam Chair, the next item is a form letter that comes periodically from the ABBCC seeking confirmation of the estimate of resident population, temporary resident population for the Town of Sturbridge. It is an annual designation that you folks are cast, asked to cast, and the form is in your agenda package. I would ask that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the seasonal population for the Town of Sturbridge in order to calculate the number of seasonal package store licenses the town may approve, which is kind of a moot point, because we don't really have seasonal package stores, but...
Right. Now, is this usually the one we get from the state every year to give a number on the seasonal? It's on the seasonal population. This number here looks more like almost an accurate population number now. We've usually, I think, thrown out...
It says right on there, estimated that the temporary increased resident population of Sturbridge as of July 10th, 17 will be estimated resident.
But I believe, no, we usually throw in 20,000, because we're counting all the people at the campgrounds and everything.
So this is the first time I've undergone this process here in Sturbridge. The way the principle sometimes works is that you're going to lose a lot of people during the daytime. They're going to go to their jobs, maybe outside of town, but you have other people that are coming in during the day because they're on vacation, or they're at the lake, or they're at the campgrounds, or they're tourists at the old Sturbridge Village. So if you wish, I can easily amend this to say 20,000, if that's what Sturbridge typically does.
That's normally what we've thrown in. Yeah, the police.
The police usually tell us that it's at least 20,000.
Yeah, that's the number we've used before, because, I mean, I'm sure we're at 10,000 people.
Sure. If you'd like, you can make that your motion, and I will amend it accordingly.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to increase that to be 20,000.
So moved.
Okay.
He seconded that, I guess.
Okay. Any discussion on increasing number? All in favor?
I'll modify the form.
Is there a motion to approve the form?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I will amend the form, and I will leave it out for your signature in your agenda in your mail slots.
Okay.
To the members of the Board of Selectmen and to the general public, I would like to present you all with copies of our first-ever trail to the guides and open spaces of the Town of Sturbridge. This was one of the things that was prepared through our STA funds last year. It was very, I know you all got a copy of it. I'm going to give one to our friend and colleague from the Telegram Gazette before he leaves. It is a very well-done document describing all of the trail systems that are provided for by the Town of Sturbridge. It also has the codes that you can scan with your smart devices, and it will bring you to the websites that details each of the trails as well. It is a guide that we're looking to promote through our Tourism Division that will help bring more tourists and excitement to our beautiful trail system that we have in Sturbridge, which is really a gem and quite unlike a lot of the other communities that I've had knowledge and experience of. So I just want to let everybody know, these trail guides will become available. They are being printed as we speak in sections, and if you are interested in getting a trail guide, please outreach to the Conservation Department at the Town of Sturbridge or the Town Administrator's Office, and we'll be happy to provide you one, free of charge. And we are also presenting some of these to our local hotels as well.
Oh, that's good.
So, nice job to the entire team for pulling this together. It was a great exercise. Madam Chair, I would ask that the Board of Selectmen concur on the appointment of William Gibson as an alternate electrical inspector effective January 1st, 2017.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
The Sturbridge School Committee is seeking a designee from the Board of Selectmen to participate in negotiations with the Sturbridge Teachers Association. So one of you have the awesome responsibility of representing the Board of Selectmen in those discussions.
Well, we've actually also had the Town Administrator do it.
Oh, I'm happy to do that, but one of the members of the board is actually a voting member of the school committee in those discussions. Bless you again. We're all falling apart on this side of the group.
Okay. Hear idea come out.
Yeah.
Is there anyone willing to? I would, other than the fact, I think I'd be kind of prejudiced.
Right. I don't mind doing it. Do you know what day it is?
No, they're actually asking for us to just name, and then we would work to schedule it with whomever.
I don't mind doing it.
I do know they usually have them in the afternoon, but that's not...
That's not an issue for me. I don't mind. I've had experience from both the management end and the other end, so I wouldn't mind doing it.
Yeah. Yeah. I negotiated from that other end.
Yeah, I've done it from both sides.
And I'm not too far removed from there, so...
You were a teacher too, right?
I was, but I was also a principal, so I've done it on both ends. I've negotiated from the managerial side, and I was union president and did it from that side.
So now we got two of them.
Okay. Is somebody willing to make a motion to name Priscilla Jimis as a designee for strategy sessions with the Burgess School Committee?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And Priscilla, most of the role of the Board of Selectmen is really for budgetary issues, you know, to kind of give the flavor of where we are budgetarily. I'm happy to sit and work with you and to talk with you about those discussions.
That works. That works. Thank you.
Madam Chair, in your agenda package, you will find the MMA legislative, spring legislative breakfast meetings have been set, and I bring it to your attention, as I do twice a year, in the spring and in the fall, in case any members of the Board of Selectmen are interested in going. I forwarded to you, I believe, also the email which accompanied this. If anybody is interested in going, you're free to click the registration. It is free of charge. There is no cost to this. Sadly, I'm not going to be able to attend any of these this year, but that doesn't mean that one of the members of the Board of Selectmen are not going to be able to attend if they wish, so...
Okay, we have the information. Okay.
On the second page, I'm sorry, the last page of your agenda package, in your agenda package, you have a copy prepared by Town Council for the vote of the Board of Selectmen for the betterment assessments. And the vote that the Board of Selectmen is being asked to make by Town Council... And the vote that the Board of Selectmen is being asked to make by Town Council states as follows, that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Sturbridge determined in order that a system of main drains has been laid out and constructed in Karen Road and Valley Road in Sturbridge, and that the betterments shall be assessed upon the properties benefiting there from, which properties are identified in the Betterment Assessment Notice and Statement executed by the Board today, authorized by Town Council, to change the names of the owners of the properties to account for recent conveyances, if any, and to record said notice. All of that says is that, as you recall, at the last town meeting we had, the Board of Selectmen included an article asking for betterments to cover the cost of the improvements that were made to Karen and Valley Roads, private roads in the Town of Sturbridge. It was supported by town meeting. The Board of Selectmen is asked to vote this so that the, the Betterment Assessment notices can be properly prepared, divvied up, and recorded by Town Council. I'm not asking you to sign those tonight, I'm asking you folks to authorize, to have Town Council and I prepare these documents with this motion prepared by Council. We will prepare the documents necessary for your signatures and presentation at a future meeting and for recording by Town Council. And I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, so is there a motion on, as he read, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I, this is the notice, this is not the actual order of betterment?
Correct. I have the orders of betterment too.
But, okay, my experience is, is that the notice of Betterment Assessment has to be recorded in the registry before the project commences.
Oh, the project is done.
I know. But that's, I'm wondering why we waited this long to record this notice of pending betterment assessments, because anybody that bought property would not know that they, they were going to be assessed a betterment. So the reason for doing it early, as soon as town meeting approves the appropriation and Selectmen want to go ahead with the project, we should have, in my opinion, have recorded this notice at that time.
You're probably correct, and in fact, I think you are correct. This was an oversight in the project, I didn't even know that the project had commenced-
I just bring it up for a few-
And I found out after the fact that the project was done.
I just bring it up for future reference.
No, you're right, you are correct.
If we have another project like this, I'd like to get the notice out there as soon as possible and record it, and then we do the betterment assessment when the project's complete.
You are correct, sir.
That's it.
So what you're saying is the system of main drains and, and pipes have already been laid out and constructed, is that correct?
That's correct, and every, even the seed has been laid. We are withholding the cost of that, that payment on that, so that, that final payment hasn't been made to the contractor. We're going to wait till the springtime to make sure that the seed has taken, and if it has, we will then release the final payment, but we have not, we have not settled completely with the contract.
Do you happen to know where the drains drain into?
I'm sorry.
Or yet.
That's what I'm wondering.
I'm sorry, I do not, no. If you want, I can try to get a copy of the-
I believe we do have easements.
If you want, I can try to get a copy of the plan and get it over to you, I can do that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, because that whole thing is downhill right to Cedar Lake.
That's correct, and that's the way it was, I think, before. There were, there were a system of drains before, they were not great, and they have been improved through this process of, of the road resurfacing. I'll see if I can get you a copy of the plan.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, and any other discussion? All in favor? Okay.
One moment, please.
Yep, it's okay.
Because if I don't write it down, I'm going to forget. Madam Chair, in your agenda packages was, is a memo to the recently voted changes to the personnel plan, job descriptions by the Personnel Committee. As I told you folks, when we met recent, met recently, I was going to be bringing forward a large list of, of updates to the Personnel Classification Plan, particularly job descriptions. I want to again publicly thank the Personnel Committee for their tireless work in reviewing and bringing our Personnel Classification Plan up to snuff. We met as a, as a committee at the last week of January, and we've made the following, the committee made the following recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for your approval. Position 1, DPW Administrative Assistant, approved by the Personnel Committee, January 30th, 2017, grade of 4, there was no change in grade. Position Operation Manager at the DPW, approved by Personnel, January 30th, 2017, grade of 13, there was no change in grade. Director of Public Works, approved by Personnel, January 30th, 2017, grade 18, the grading corrects the calculated grade for the position with no impact on the current employee. Library Assistant, approved by Personnel, October 22nd, 2014, at a grade of 5. It was previously approved by Personnel but was not yet presented to the Board of Selectmen for approval previously, no change in grade. Library Page, approved by Personnel, October 22nd, 2014, at a grade of 1. Again, approved previously by Personnel, yet never presented to the Board of Selectmen for approval, no change in grade. Adult and Young Adult Services Librarian, approved by Personnel, October 22nd, 2014, grade of 9. Again, previously approved by Personnel, never presented to the Board of Selectmen, no change in grade. Children's Librarians, Children's Services Librarian, October 22nd, 2014, a grade of 8. Previously approved by Personnel, never presented to the Board of Selectmen, no change in grade. Emergency Management Director, approved by Personnel, November 28th, 2016, grade of 10. Currently, this role is filled by another employee. The job description is meant for description purposes only, not for position purposes. Emergency Management, oh, I'm sorry, that one is there twice. The last position, Data Collector, approved by Personnel, February 11th, 2016, at a grade of 7. Currently, this role is filled by a contractor, so the job description is meant for description purposes only, so, meaning that we can evaluate the work being done. Madam Chair, I will answer any questions. The revised job descriptions are attached to your, your file. You should know that I am keeping, I keep a master file of every position by position with all the history of those old positions, whatever I can find and whatever I can, whatever I can put my fingers on, so that if I'm ever hit by a bus in the future, that the next Town Administrator will have these all laid out and easily organized.
I don't like that kind of talk, if hit by a bus.
All right, well, if I, all right, I won't say that again, I'm sorry.
There's an uprising.
Okay, that's better.
If there's an uprising, that's worse.
Well, it sounds better.
It affects all of your health or wellbeing.
Personal, yeah. Okay, any questions on any of them?
Position 8, Position 9, that's actually one position?
Yes, I made a mistake, and I included it there by mistake.
And that grade 10 is just for description because he's, he's taken on that role-
Correct.
-as an additional to his existing payers, please.
Correct, so the job description details what I'm expecting, or what the town should be expecting from that, from that person.
Okay, any other questions?
We may need a Town Administrator before the night's over.
Okay. Mary, you're in between, you're in a bad spot.
I know.
Okay, is, oh, that's okay. Is there a motion then to approve the job descriptions and grades on the positions listed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, I'm getting there on the whole pile.
One of the Selectmen's goals was to establish a written policy on hiring of employees. I've taken the liberty of preparing a draft policy. It was reviewed by department heads and recommended by the Personnel Committee at the meeting on January 30th, 2017. It's brought before the Board of Selectmen for your review and concurrence. If the Board so concurs, it will be added to the Board of Selectmen's policy book under the Personnel section. You may also remember, Madam Chair, that when we did our HR study, this was one of the policies that was recommended by the consultant to be, to be present, to be prepared and presented for approval. Basically, what it does, Madam Chair, is it cites Massachusetts, the Sturbridge Town Charter, Section 6.2, as the, as the basis, the legal basis of the hiring and appointment process here in the Town of Sturbridge. And what we've done is we created a very comprehensive checklist of all the things that we would be asking our future employees to do, when they need to do it, and how they need to do it. So we've run it by many of the department heads in town to make sure that it's consistent with all of our town departments. It has gotten thumbs up, and it will be a working document if we find that there are other things that we would like to add. All we have to do is amend the policy and re-add it to our personnel policies. Madam Chair, I'll answer any questions that you folks may have.
Any questions from the board? Is there a motion to approve the hiring policy?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I have a, in your agenda package, a memo requesting a sick leave donation from Leslie Wong to Bruce Butcher, who recently had a medical issue. According to the town bylaws, any of, any such request must be approved by the Board of Selectmen at a public meeting.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I was sorry, you had a question?
He was.
Yes, it was. I would ask for your approval for a road race for May 27th, approved and recommended by the Sturbridge Police Department. This is for something that I found out was an annual event, the BB-5K Road Race to raise awareness on the, on the issues relative to melanoma, a deadly form of skin cancer. It was reviewed by Tom Ford and Earl Desert, and they're going to follow the same path, which was news to me, I didn't know about this project, but I was happy to learn about it through this, through this exercise, and it comes before the Board of Selectmen for your approval.
Okay, any questions?
Would you like to represent our office?
What is the date of the road race?
It's May 27th.
27th, 9 a.m.
Okay.
Just so you know, Leon, it's always very well-attended and really embraced by the community. A lot of people run, a lot of people walk.
Nice.
And the community really comes together. It's run by a very, a very nice family in town.
Good, thank you.
Do we get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the BBK 5K Road Race, raising awareness for melanoma, to be held on May 27th of this year.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Madam Chair, I am here to present to you a draft list of goals for the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator for 2017. I am, I have, in your agenda package, I have a draft press release that I will run through you folks for the education, for the Board of Selectmen, for our, our, our large audience here tonight, and the people who are watching at home or watching through our town's website. The Sturbridge Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator underwent a goal-setting exercise where we came up with several ideas and, and thoughts about goals for the upcoming calendar year. They present, the goals as presented are as follows. Number 1, finalize chief procurement officer credentialing for the Town Administrator. Number 2, develop a five-year facilities plan for our municipal buildings. Number 3, present regional dispatch findings and recommendation for Selectmen's consideration. Number 4, work with the Personnel Committee and the Selectmen to update the personnel policies of the town. Number 5, work with the Personnel Committee to complete job description review and develop a schedule for periodic review of all positions. Number 6, in the area of policy development, five policies are procedures to be considered this year. Conclusion, policy on the conclusion of Selectmen's meetings. Now, I do recall that one of you said that there might already be a policy on this, and that if that's the case, what I will do is I will accept that policy and I will present it for inclusion in our policy book at a future meeting once I get it. Number 2 is citizen forum at Selectmen's meeting. Number 3 is the role of the Selectmen. Number 4 was the role of the Town Administrator. Number 5, 5 was developing written criteria for future TIFs, that would be under Economic Development Section. Number 7, comprehensive study of water pipes in the oldest sections of town. Number 8, prepare a DPW staffing analysis. Number 9, complete the study of trash hauling versus landfill operations. Number 10, and Craig, I'm going to give you a copy of this, so. Number 10, prepare action agenda to meet the outstanding items found within our Master Plan and Commercial Tourism District Study. Number 11, review the Complete Streets Program and to make a recommendation on that to the Board of Selectmen. Number 12, prepare a comprehensive list of available commercial and industrial properties for sale or development and assist in its advertising. Number 13, begin to plan new community events through our Tourism Division. And finally, number 14, explore rezoning of Route 15 properties to promote development. I offer this for the Board of Selectmen's discussion and debate and amendment tonight, and if so, at the end of this discussion, I'd like the Board of Selectmen to concur on the list as, as discussed, and I will then present our fine gentleman here a copy for publication purposes.
Okay, does anyone see anything missed or anything meant to be added that wasn't?
I don't think so, it seems pretty comprehensive.
Seems like it includes everything that we-
Seems like everything we talked about.
Okay, so is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the Town of Sturbridge goals for 2017 as outlined by the Town Administrator.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
One, one question. In these goals, I know that we've, we've got that problem up on Gladding Lane, where you can come in on one end and get down into that area down by a lead mine lake, but in an emergency, you can't get out on the other side because the state has put a gate up right next to one of the people's buildings there. There's probably a little short area where they go through, and I think maybe we should get something with the state that, you know, we would be able to open that up in emergencies. Let's say, you know, a tornado came through and knocked a whole bunch of trees down, and it's the only way we could get people in and out of their emergency vehicles or something like that. We, we should have some kind of a way that we can get that thing open in a hurry.
Well, it probably wouldn't have to be a goal, I'm sure Leon can get in touch with the state or even Mr. Morrison, both you.
It, it is an issue that needs to be attended to. I've got, gotten calls from several people down there, and they're, they're quite concerned that, you know, they're going to get stuck in there, or somebody's going to need attention, and they can't get there.
What is the name of the street?
Gladding.
Gladding?
Gladding.
And it's a very, very short piece of land, it's nothing at all, but for some reason, they've got that thing shut down.
Madam Chair, I would accept that as an item under new business, you don't have to reiterate, and I'll accept it as a new business item, and I'll try to get an answer to you on this. You know, another, I think I can speak to our state rep and state senator to have them advocate on our behalf if, if we need to.
And that's that piece that I was referring to earlier?
Yes.
You know, with the state, and I don't know whether it's a liability issue or what, what the deal is, but they, for some reason, closed down that little piece.
Is it a private way, or is it a public road?
I believe it's private.
Okay. I'm just not familiar, actually.
Right, but it's been open for so many years, I don't know whether it's, you know, they're trying to stop a, an adverse possession thing, or I don't know what they're doing with it.
I'll look into it, sure. I'm happy to.
Okay.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay.
Um, oh, can I have our little thing? Madam Chair, the Town of Sturbridge is in receipt of the following, I'm sorry, the, a certificate of appreciation from the Marine Corps League to the Town of Sturbridge awarded January 14th for our participation in the Toys for Tots campaign for 2016. We did quite well, and the Marine Corps sent us a proclamation, a certificate stating so, and I just want to share this with the members of the Board of Selectmen. I think we've been doing that for many, many years, the Toys for Tots program through our police and-
Yeah, we have it, yeah. We have a copy.
Town hall.
Yeah, we have a copy of it. I'm good.
You want it?
Oh, I'm good, I'm good, I get it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I am here to present to you a suggestion to the Board of Selectmen, here, thank you, regarding a provision in the Mass Municipal Modernization Act, which allows for the Board of Selectmen to designate a member of the board and an alternate if desired to sign the warrants, the payroll and the payables warrants every week. In your agenda package, I have a memo detailing the new change in the Municipal Modernization Act, as well as the information from the Division of Local Services going into further detail as to what the change in the Municipal Modernization Act allows for. In essence, what the- what the process would be is that if the Board of Selectmen wished, they could designate an individual and an alternate, if you wished, to sign the warrants on a weekly basis, as opposed to having all, a majority of the Board coming in every week to sign the warrants on the table. I bring this to your attention. If you folks are interested in this, there is a process that you folks can take by voting at an open meeting to designate one of you to substitute in the event, or the apps, to come in and sign the warrants on a weekly basis, and to designate one of you to serve as a substitute in the event that the designated member is unable to attend to their duties that week. I leave it to your consideration. I would say, if you did choose to do this, we would continue the practice of leaving them out all weekend long, as we currently do, so that they can be reviewed by the members of the Board of Selectmen each and every single week. I consider that to be due diligence on behalf of the town. At the end of the day, this is not a decision of the Town Administrator, this is a decision of the Board of Selectmen, and I'll defer to you folks as you see fit.
Well, I personally think it's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
You kind of get three, so we stand a better chance of having one and an alternate.
Having talked to Barbara Berry, too, if we don't sign them till Thursday or Friday, some people don't get paid. And there's been complaints by people waiting to get paid. And she's, you know, she did talk to me about this, so I did hear this from her. I think it's a great idea, because it doesn't stop any of us from going to look at it, or even signing it if we wanted to, but I think it's great. I, I'm all for it.
It's okay if you, if you want to come in every weekend and take a look at it.
Well, during the week, you can look at it.
Yeah, actually
Yeah, during the week, too.
I've never seen them out on weekends.
Well, there's sometimes there on the Thursday or Friday, on the Friday afternoon.
Only sometimes.
They usually come out on Monday.
On Monday.
And they put them in your box on Monday, and then we have me, so that's
But you can even see them from Barbara Berry's office. If you don't, if it's gone down for payroll, you can just go to payroll, down to the office and see them.
When do they send out the checks? On Thursday?
Yeah.
So if they
Town employees get
So if they send out the checks on Thursday, then those reports could stay in here until Wednesday night, and then Thursday morning, they go downstairs.
Well, I think, I think they would and have requested earlier than Wednesday.
They have.
There are vendors, too, that, you know, get held up because
We don't make it.
Checks don't get mailed out until warrants are signed. And to mail them out on Thursday, you don't get them till Monday, then the post office goes now.
Okay, and I guess why do we, why do we look at them in the first place then, if we're not watching out for what's going on?
Well, you're not losing that right. You still have the right
To come in on the weekend.
No, no, during the week, too.
Oh, anytime.
No, during the week.
You're only part of the week.
Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah. You're not losing any right to look at them.
We're just, we're just giving the responsibility to someone else, but
To sign.
To sign it, but we can come and see it. And if we have a problem, we can address the problem that we have.
Sticky notes like
Yeah, exactly.
And done.
I personally think it's a great thing.
Mary?
I think it's, you know, I think it's a very good idea. It seems, you know, just a more efficient way of doing things. I don't know if Craig's concerned, but we can try it. And is there anything to prevent us if we try for six months to go, to revert to the way we've done it before? I mean, I can't imagine that you can't undo
Yeah.
Something like that.
Some policy that we put in.
If something's not working.
So the designee and the alternate have to be members of the Board of Selectmen? Can't be either.
Can't be Town Administrator, can't be
Can't be secretary, can't be anybody.
Everyone can't be.
Has, this may be a stupid question, but has the, anybody reviewed the town charter to make sure there's nothing in there that would prohibit us from doing that?
No.
No, there isn't.
There's nothing in there? Doesn't require us to sign?
No, no.
There's nothing in the advice from, from the Division of Local Services that says that this could not be undone by vote of the Board of Selectmen? I would say that there's no
I can't imagine that it wouldn't be.
Yeah, I can't imagine either.
And it's, and it's Mass general law that determines who has to sign payroll and warrants.
Right, so as long as it is a selectman and an alternate selectman, I don't see that's an issue.
Just remember that it has to be an individual. It has to be a name of a person.
Right. Okay, so So can we name somebody?
That's up to you.
Mary Blanchard, you come all the time. Are you
I live close to her.
Right. Are you okay? Are you okay with that?
I have no problem with it.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I recommend that Mary Blanchard, Chairman Blanchard, be the designee for the warrant items on a weekly basis.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
You sure you're gonna be here? Because I'm here more than you are.
We need a designee. We need a, we need, we need an alternate, too. So right now
But the only thing with that, Craig, I'll recommend you as the alternate, but you occasionally can't sign
Right.
Because of, yeah, and then that's going to create a problem.
It is. If she can't go, if she can't go, the designee has to be able to sign for all of it.
Right.
Well, what I do is, if I, if one of my bills is in there, I have to pull the bill. Put it on the next warrant.
That's true. Craig has been very good about that.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it. So my signature has never been taken up.
That's why you're a good alternate, but you're not a good designee, because eventually you want to get paid. You're not willing to pull it indefinitely. See, we have to designate somebody
Right.
On a weekly basis. So if, if it's you, and then you pull it, then the following week, you're going to want to submit it, unless you're going to become a volunteer.
Whatever you want to do.
But you understand the point?
I, I understand what you're saying, but a hundred dollars is not going to kill me. Five hundred dollars is not going to kill me. You don't understand that if I don't sign it this week, it's going to be there next week. It's not going anywhere.
Right.
Somebody has to sign it.
Yeah.
What we're saying is
That bill cannot be paid until somebody
Someone else signs it.
Fine.
If, if that occasion arises, we generally meet every two weeks. We, the Board of Selectmen could correct that situation very quickly, within two-week period.
Right, I, I agree, but for him to be the regular designee, when he occasionally enters, at some point, you're going to want to get paid.
Mm-hmm.
So would be a good alternate, and, as opposed to, you know, the primary, the primary person to sign them, right?
Whatever you think. I'm not worried about it, but if it's concerning you, then I guess we'll do it.
No, 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 you're missing my point.
I am not missing your point. You're missing my point.
No, it doesn't
I don't care if I get paid this month or in six months. Doesn't bother me.
It doesn't concern, I am just as happy to appoint you as the designee. I don't have a problem with you signing it. We're just saying
Somewhere along the line.
If, it's If you want to be the designee, that's fine, too.
It's just that you wouldn't be able to sign it now or six months from now.
Okay, then I'm not going to sign it, and don't make me the designee.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we appoint
We already have a motion.
We have a motion for a designee.
We already voted.
No, we didn't vote on it. We didn't vote. We're in discussion.
Motion.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Okay, I can vote for myself, because
Sorry.
If four.
Four to
And I'm going to make a motion that we designate Craig Moran as the alternate in the event that Mary can't sign.
I respectfully decline.
You don't want to be that?
That means somebody else is going to have to step up to the plate.
Okay.
Priscilla?
I don't mind. I don't care. I live close to her.
I'll make a motion that we designate Priscilla as the alternate.
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Chair, the last business under Town Administrator's update that I have for you is that I am announcing that the, there is a vacancy on the Betterment Committee for someone from the hotel trade, specifically to the hotel trade. We sent a notice to all hoteliers in the town, and I did receive a request, a generous offer from Arif Khan from the Days Inn, to serve for the 2017 Betterment Committee, representing the hotel trade. And I would ask, because it is an appointment of the Board of Selectmen, for the selectmen to consider that name of Arif Khan to serve on the Betterment Committee.
Days Inn, now that's the one down near Pilot, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion? What's the name again?
Arif Khan.
Arif Khan to the Betterment Committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint Arif Khan to the Betterment Committee.
Second. Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no other business before the Board.
Okay, oh, speaking of the Betterment, Deborah, I put those other two packets back on your desk because they were in my box for Betterment.
Yes, yeah, I passed them out. They were, what, for Betterment?
Yeah.
What, today you put them out back up?
No, yesterday, Sunday.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I didn't know where they
Okay, all right, yeah.
They were on your, they were in your box?
Yeah.
All right.
When I ever came in and saw the box, I said, mm.
Sorry, that was a mistake.
But I went through my pile a couple of times. I don't have the correspondence list.
Yeah, I don't either.
Sorry.
Are we ready to move to that?
Yes, yes.
Correspondence for February 6, 2017. Correspondence dated the 17th, Mass DEP, Commonwealth of Mass, Southbridge Sanitary Landfill. January 18th, Leon Goman, Town Administrator. Thank you. Letter for Alice Training. January 18th, United States Department of Agriculture Project, Plimpton Forest. July 17th, 14 through October 31st, 15, final financial performance reports. January 18th, the ABC Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, regarding a new law for recorking of wine. January 20th, Mass DEP, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, combining permit for dredging and filling at Hammond Brook in Sturbridge. January 26th, U.S. Department of Justice, regarding the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. January 27th, Mass DEP, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, final license number 14265, construction and maintenance of five-foot height by 163-foot-long concrete block retaining wall to replace an existing timber retaining wall, Hopkinton, Mass, water of Kwama Kwaset Pond, Sturbridge, Worcester County. And I will add that we did get correspondence today from Charles McDevitt of McGilpin Road, regarding his concerns over the Mass, I'm sorry, over the Southbridge landfill and the water testing of houses on McGilpin Road. That was by email, and I think it went to all members of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Okay, any old business, Craig? Priscilla?
No.
No. Mike, Mary?
I just had one. I know we discussed it at our retreat, of the legal question regarding the passage of the new marijuana bill, and we were going to inquire of council, whether the town could possibly pursue the process for putting before the voters a ban on recreational and/or retail shops for marijuana, or does the law preclude us from doing so because we are currently undergoing the process for approval of a medical facility? It seemed like there was some conflicting law, conflicting language in the law.
There's clearly conflicting language in the law.
Right, so, I mean, because I would be interested in pursuing the process to put it before the voters.
So, I don't want to spoil any surprises, but at your next selectmen's meeting, the planning board and I are coming before the Board of Selectmen to discuss the medical marijuana item, and I'm inviting the Town Council to join us for that discussion.
Excellent. When is that? The next, our next meeting?
On Janu-, February 21st.
Good.
Yeah, your next meeting.
The holes will be gone, I'll be sharp.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my own, only
Old business.
Old business will become new business.
Yeah, new business, Craig?
No, ma'am.
Priscilla?
No.
No.
Mary?
I just have one regarding that letter that we received today from the resident on McGilpin. I did answer back and indicate that if he wanted to come before the Board as an agenda item to contact our chair or our Town Administrator with his concerns, that that would be the process to follow, and I CC Leon. But I also, he raised something that I would like to pursue, my, have the Board pursue, and that's the possibility of looking into whether there's neighborhood support, and whether it's feasible, or cost-wise or capacity-wise, to extend the Town Services down Fisk Hill. I know, I think it ends at Old Farm, and McGilpin is the next neighborhood down. And he expressed, I think, what I want to say, I haven't spoken with him, an interest in, in that, and I would like to know, is there other support in that neighborhood for doing that? I know when, and I've brought this up before, but when we voted to increase the size of our wastewater treatment plant, there was a lot of debate on how large, you weren't here for all this, and you're very fortunate, but there, there was a lot of back and forth between how large that wastewater treatment plant was going to be. There were advocates for not making it that large, because they worried about too much development. We had Ty and Bond saying, if you don't make it a certain size, why are you even increasing it? It wasn't cost-effective. But in any event, we reached the 1.5 million, whatever, a day. And so I think, I don't want to speak, but I, when we went before the voters, the idea was that more neighborhoods were going to be brought under Town Services. It's one of the reasons we voted in quite a bit larger a facility. We went, we doubled the size, actually, from 7.5 to 1.5. And if there's support for a health concern to increase Town Services that way, I mean, I think that that's something that we should pursue. And also, the idea was to bring down the Betterment cost, the cost of that plant by getting new neighborhoods on. That was one of the ways that the current, like, I'm on Town Services, Mary and Priscilla are, and
I am.
Okay, it's, it's actually very expensive. You know, the water and sewer bill comes around, and, you know, now it's, it's a good-sized bill. In the past, it was a nothing.
But in their particular area, they don't worry about the disposal. They're worried about the drinking water and the, you know
Right, but
What they're going to need to redirect the habitat. Right now, they're not having sewage problems at all.
No, they want, I don't know what they want, but the letter, the letter, the letter was also for
It's clear.
For town water.
Was for town water.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
Water, not sewer.
But town water, they're not going to get the sewer, they just want the water.
Okay, well, water then. But that would still bring down, the more neighborhoods that get on Town Services, the
Yeah, but the problem with, I mean, there's so much that would need to be looked in before
Oh, yeah, it's not something we can just pass by motion.
Yeah.
But I think that it's worth, I would like to make it an agenda item where we review, you know, the feasibility, the cost, or, or maybe just start with our Town Administrator inquiring if there's support in that neighborhood for water.
Because I do
Because it's a Betterment that they're going to pay for.
Yeah, but there is
Paying for, just like we did.
Right, but there was a response to, not that particular letter, but a response to another letter that came from a resident on McGilpin. And in it, it was very clear that there is no, that the limits are well below the DEP limits right now, but there's, but there is an awful lot that would need to be looked in for. And even in the letter from this gentleman, you know, I understand that people get worked up and everything, but talking about bribes and different things like that, I think that's
I'm not addressing, I'm not addressing any of that. The only thing that I'm targeting is, because I have been an advocate for a while now in, into looking at how we can increase the neighborhoods that are on Town Services, because really, that is why we doubled the size of our wastewater treatment plant. And the people who are currently paying that Betterment, that would be a big lift off their shoulders as well. And if the neighborhood, I don't know what the neighborhood wants. I don't live in McGilpin Road.
Well, they don't want sewer, they want water.
I know, but wouldn't, okay. Well, in any event, I think it's worth reviewing. If there is support in that neighborhood, and I guess I would like maybe our Town Administrator to reach out to this individual.
Before you go there, I want to say something before you go there, before you make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. This individual's got some conflicting information here. He, he refers to a meeting with the Board of Health for Thursday, the 9th. My understanding, by emails that I've received, is that that's going to the 16th, because they're waiting for EPA to come.
Right.
I think we're jumping the gun here, primarily because this neighborhood is getting active. This neighborhood is working through the Board of Health, and they have an EPA come down. And I think we can't have two units going at the same thing, because it's a waste of effort.
See.
So I think someone needs to find out what the Board of Health is doing with this because it is doing something. Because I've seen emails, and, and they talk about the 16th, okay?
I agree with that.
They moved it. So for us to get in on this right now, I think is premature. I think we need to see what is it that, that the complaint is, how much of the neighborhood is involved, what are they looking for? And I think you'll hear all that at the Board of Health open meeting that they are advertising. I, now, last I knew, was on the 16th of February, which is also a Thursday.
When was it first scheduled? Because-
It was first scheduled for the ni-, for the 2nd, then it went to the 9th, and then it went to the 16th.
The agent, but the 27th, from Jamie.
Okay, so it's changed again.
Okay, let me just-
So it's changed again. So my point is, it's like, who's running this show, and does anybody really know what's happening? Because the dates keep changing. So if you're trying to keep a community aware, you can't do it this way. You can't keep flipping dates.
Well, I think, I think the Board of Health has been on this and is on this, and the interim health agent is, too. I mean, there's nothing wrong with us being apprised of the situation, but I do agree with Priscilla that we can't have all different boards jumping on the same issue.
Okay.
We need to hear what the DEP says, hear what the Health Board says, and then maybe there is something that we will need to do. But we do need a lot of information, don't you agree, Mr.?
I think I can help all of you.
Can I, can I address some after you? I would like to be right.
No, you're right, I'll meet you first.
Okay, yeah, just because, um, they're not mutually exclusive courses of action. The Board of Health has jurisdiction over testing of that water, determining whether there is or not contamination oversight. That is entirely separate way of addressing those concerns. Whether or not town services water is extended to a neighborhood as part of a betterment in a proactive way as a preventive measure, I hope that all those houses come out showing zero contamination, not even well below the limit. I hope they don't show any. But that doesn't mean that neighborhood may still want to get on town services. I got on town services, and my well was clean. So they're two very different issues. We are, we are the ones that would be proactive in extending town water to a neighborhood, and that is a part for whatever the DEP determines is or isn't contaminated water. I mean, we're not paying for it, so I don't see the resistance if there's support, and I don't know if there is. There's certainly support by that one family, and the betterment is paid for by that neighborhood. We know, um, when it almost went-
That's not, that's not what this email says.
I'm-
This email doesn't say-
I'm not addressing everything else in the email, but they, no, but they were-
But you're opening the door.
Well, I'm opening the door because there's a-
And that's not what this says.
I'm opening the door because, well, he needs to be educated that the betterment is paid for by-
He's educating us by telling us what our job is.
Wait a minute, I'm not-
No, seriously, I mean-
No, but, hold on.
We can't pick and choose.
Okay, well, okay, let's not-
Well, we have jurisdiction over whether a betterment is pursued in a neighborhood. I don't care, or it's not our purview to look into every aspect of it, nor to be, well, I don't like the tone of his letter, so I'm not going to, et cetera. There's concern on McGilpin Road for the quality of their water, and I would like to know if there's support in that neighborhood for even pursuing a betterment for water. It, the water right now goes all the way to Old Farm, and you don't have to have a water problem to pursue town services. For example, you know, Walker Pond all showed up, they did not want town services, and that neighborhood ended up not getting town services because they voted it down. But there is a process, and that doesn't start with the Board of Health in terms of, we're the water and sewer commissioners. We're the ones charged with looking into neighborhoods for possible extension of services. And it does not seem at all unreasonable to me, where water already goes to Old Farm, and we have probably the capacity, because we doubled the size of our plant, and it could bring down the bills for everybody else. To me, it's certainly worth pursuing to at least look into whether or not there's community support for it. That's all I'm saying.
No, before I get to, Craig, I would just-
Regardless of how the water is tested.
I would just like to see how much information comes from the DEP and the Board of Health. I don't disagree that, yes, we are, but on the other hand, it's not up to us to all of a sudden pick and choose this neighborhood because we got a letter. We could get letters from other neighborhoods. I mean, there's plans out there on where the water should go. There's plans, there's sewer service districts, too. So I think we need a whole lot more information.
Right, that's why I was asking for it to be an agenda item.
I had, I had a conversation with Senator Goby and Representative Smaller over the weekend, when I went to that Boy Scout function, and one of the issues that came up was the, the area on McGilpin Road. And they are very, very concerned about it on the state level, and they are kind of leaning now on the Department of Environmental Protection to find out, where is this thing going? How serious is it? They're, they're, they're looking beyond that with the solid waste disposal people because not only what's happening with this cell that's going bad, or whatever's happening, what's making this wherever it's leaching from, which we assume is from the Southbridge landfill, but we're not sure of it? And what they're trying to do is, they're trying to look at this expansion of the landfill onto more area in Charlton and possibly, you know, towards our area. I don't know exactly where it is, I haven't seen it on a map yet. But they are on board, they want to know what's going on, they're monitoring the situation, and I can see these people's frustration, and I can see them getting nervous, you know, it's like the volcano coming, and we gotta get this thing taken care of, and how far is this thing gonna go? You know, is it gonna come down over the hill and come down, you know, over Fisk Hill and, and start consuming underneath the ground? So if it's gotta be stopped, you know, I mean, we're talking about running water into another area. If they can, you know, finally come up with where this supposed leach aid is coming through in there, it may be a situation where somebody else may be paying for the water, and quickly.
Well, that's it, I mean, it's, there's enough people on board investigating and-
There certainly is, and they were very, very concerned about it, and, you know, they're, they're not, they're not gonna let it down. So I am, I am very happy with what they gave me for the background and what they're doing, and our Board of Health is certainly pushing it. And, you know, I don't know what Southbridge is gonna do. They, they're talking about that the lower cells that originally Southbridge put in or something, you know, with the load packing down from so much trash on top of it is pushing the bottom cells, and evidently, I don't know, something about the construction of the cell is-
They're unlined cells.
-deficient or whatever. So it's, now what it's doing is, you know, these hundreds of tons of trash are just compressing this thing, and it's like, you know, squeezing it out of the ground and pushing it along. So I don't know exactly what the, what the scenario is, is what the, the cure is, but I mean, you know, it's somewhere along the line, you know, we've got water, and we've got water here and water there, but the thing is, we gotta get in and stop this thing before it goes any farther.
Yeah, a few minutes ago, the town administrator said that he had a few things to add, and I'd just like to listen to what he had to say.
You're the only person, including my wife, doesn't want to listen to me, so. All I would say is that there's too much information that we don't know. We don't know when the meetings are, we don't know what's being asked. What I do know is that at our next meeting, we have Shane and Greg coming in, and one of the things that I could recommend is that if you let me try to find out when we're having meetings, what are we looking for, I can try to pull, I can try to find out what the Board of Health is doing in the meantime. By the time we meet together in two weeks' time, we could probably have a brief discussion with Greg and Shane if we were going to bring water to an area, whether this one or any area, what's the process, what do we need to do, what are the steps, so that we can begin this discussion so that when we're prepared for-
Yeah, this, that's, we need information from everybody, I mean, and there's nothing wrong with getting the cursory information from Greg and Shane on extensions. I mean, they are expensive.
Can, through you, Madam Chair, Leon, can you find out when those meeting, when that meeting is?
As soon as I find out, I'll let you all know. I'm not waiting for the meeting on the 21st.
No, no, I know, because there is, last I knew was the 16th, and I don't know with the DEP, because something about the DEP couldn't make the 9th. If you can let us know-
As soon as I know, I didn't even know about the meeting that we're talking about for Thursday until today.
Yeah.
I only heard about it today. So you folks had that information before I did.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Leon.
So I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Well, I'm still, it's my new business, I'm still going to make a motion that we request our town administrator to answer this letter and to provide information as to what the steps are to seek any betterment, including an extension of town water, under our bylaws. I think that, that he has a right to know what processes follow, that it ends up going before a town meeting for a vote, that type of thing, and, so that, so that, so that if there is support in that neighborhood, they know what the process is. They should know that at a minimum, and I think the letter, um-
Did you get that letter? Did you get that email?
I, I got it this afternoon, I think, that's, yeah.
What would be-
I'm, so the motion, nobody seconded, so.
What would be your normal course of action, Leon, if you received that, and we didn't receive it, let's just say hypothetically? You would answer the email, I'm assuming, correct? Right.
Yeah, I mean, what I would do is, I would acknowledge receipt of the email, I would let them know that we will look into it, I'll bring it before the Board of Selectmen, I'll discuss it with our water and our, our DPW, and I would let them know, probably have that discussion with the Board of Selectmen. I mean, as you know from the email, there is a very specific request being made.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
You know, I, I, I do think that if it's found that the water is being contaminated by that, there will be offers similar to the offers being made in Charlton right now for the laying of a water line that will, public water line that will eliminate the need for well-based water, so. There's, there is a lot to still learn and to discover as to what's going on. Certainly, nobody's gonna open up their own personal coffers to pay for a water line, which could be several million dollars, without knowing that they are responsible for that. But, you know, the process is, is, there is a process that would be undertaken regardless if we were paying or if it was somebody else that was paying.
I just want them to be educated on that process. I do have a pending motion.
Well, Leon can, when he responds, he can, if he doesn't choke.
Regardless of how the water testing comes out, the Southbridge landfill is not going anywhere, whether that expansion is granted or not. So we don't know if that neighborhood doesn't wish to have water services even in five or